Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Bloomington Common Council special session for Proposed Amendments to Ordinance 1924, which repeals and reenacts the text of Title 20, the Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO. And it is Tuesday, the 10th of December, 2019. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Rallo, or Ruff?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Granger?
Present.
Rallo?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you. Here is our agenda summation. If you'd like an agenda, you may find them beside the Clerk. We will have the continued consideration of amendments to ordinance 1924, which is to repeal and replace Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Unified Development Ordinance. We will first go to presentation on unanswered questions, if we have any, from our previous discussions. We will have a summation of our conduct of deliberations regarding time limits this evening. We have a consent agenda. These are amendments for consideration which may be adopted by one roll call vote. Please note that council members are reviewing the amendments listed below and may recommend that some for quick consideration here. Please also note that any council member may request that amendments on the consent agenda be moved to their ordinary order of deliberation later on the agenda. So the consent agenda consists of use regulations, Chapter 20.03, Amendment 62, sponsored by Councilmember Sandberg and staff, affects 20.03.020 and 20.03.030. It adds a new use-specific standard under 20.03.030B10 for fraternity and sorority, and makes adjustments to Table 3.1 to reflect that added standard. Under Development Standards and Incentives, Chapter 20.04, is Amendment 65, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, and it affects 20.04.110D1, and it recognizes the need for rehabilitation of existing structures toward improved sustainability. Amendment 66 follows, which is sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, affects 20.04.110D2A4, and it specifies when roofs containing vegetation must meet landscaping guidelines to qualify for certain incentives. Followed by Amendment 67, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, affects 20.04.110D2A5, and it makes clear that onsite solar photovoltaic systems may exceed the minimum requirements for sustainable development incentives. Then it was followed by Amendment 68, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, and affects 20.04.110B1, and it adds plant material on vegetative roofs to the maintenance responsibilities of developers and their successors, and includes vegetative roof infrastructure as an example of applicable landscaping structures. Under Definitions, Chapter 20.07, is Amendment 69, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, and it affects 20.07.010. It deletes the definition for green building worksheet because the term is not used in the UDO. Then under our regular agenda, is, under Zoning Districts, Chapter 20.02, is Amendment 60, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and it affects 20.02.020 in Table 2.2, Table 2.3, Table 2.7, and Table 2.8. And it adjusts and potentially reduces the length of driveways in some residential zoning districts by amending building setbacks for attached front-loading garages or carports. That is followed by Amendment 61, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith. That affects 20.02.020E2 and Table 2.6. It increases the maximum primary structure height in R4 zoning districts from 35 to 40 feet. Under Development Standards and Incentives, Chapter 20.04, is Amendment 63, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, and it affects 20.04.020E. It amends Table 4.6, authorize exceptions to setback requirements to add a row for front entry to allow an exception for the maximum of six feet for those kinds of street-side additions which do not exceed one-third of the width of the main portion of the house. Followed by Amendment 64, sponsored by Councilmember Rallo, affects 20.04.110C7B, clarifies that a time should be set for implementation of payment in lieu definitions and procedures, and that these procedures should be publicly available. Under Definitions, is Amendment 0.9R, sponsored by Councilmember Volin and staff, and it affects 20.03.030 and 20.07.010. And it creates a definition for cooperative housing, revises the definition of family, and adds use-specific standards related to cooperative housing, land use. After that regular agenda, we will go to council schedule, and then we will recess this evening, no later than 10:00 p.m. So with that, we will go first to presentation on unanswered questions from previous discussions. Mr. Robinson or Mr. Rooker, do we have any?
We don't have any presentations tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions left hanging from previous meetings? Seeing none, we will go to conduct of deliberations. Our parliamentarian is not here, so I will read the time limits that was adopted by previous motion, which allows 10 minutes for sponsor presentation, five minutes for planning and transportation staff comment. Then we go to council questions for two minutes per council member per round, 20 minutes total. Then we proceed to public input. We allow three minutes per speaker, and no more than 2.5 hours of public comment. I don't think we'll reach that. Then we'll come back to council questions. Two minutes per council member per round, 20 minutes total, and then common council debate and vote on a suitable motion. Three minutes per council member, maximum 30 minutes in total. So that has been already adopted, so we'll proceed in that.
Do you want me to move on to the other agenda?
Yes, yes. Point of order? Yeah.
Who's going to be doing the timing? Is that going to be the Vice President?
Vice.
Vice.
Yes, she's—would you volunteer? Oh, look, our timekeeper has arrived.
Good timing.
Just in time. All right.
Thank you for your vote of support, Ms. Sandberg.
We're good.
I knew you'd miss me.
We will allow you to—we've reviewed the conduct of deliberations, and you will set the time limits. Councilmember Volin.
We've already gone over these numbers. That's fine. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So now we will go to consent agenda, if we have a motion.
Mr. President, I move the consent agenda as noted in the agenda summation.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved in second, and would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will go to the public. The public has commented on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, we're back to council.
Call the question.
Second.
Okay, questions can be called in second, and on the consent agenda, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to do that one more time. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda is adopted 8 to 0. Turning now to our regular agenda, we will go first to Amendment 60, sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I move Amendment 60 to the UDO.
Second.
This amendment is about the length of driveways in RE, R1, RM, and RH districts, and it seeks to reduce the amount of impervious surface by, in many cases, reducing the required minimum length of the driveway. This was brought to my attention by a resident here in Bloomington. I am not 100% convinced of the value of this amendment myself, but I thought it would be worth discussing. So currently, the minimum setback for front-loading garages in these districts is calculated as an additional setback from the front of the main building. But of course, as we know, we have many non-conforming, single-family lots and multifamily lots in the city. So there may be a case where the front building setback is non-conforming, and then requiring the additional space setback for the driveway would really lead to a lot more impermeable surface than is necessary. So for example, for the RE zone, the main building setback is 30 feet. If the main reason for the longer garage setback is to allow parking in the driveway, then the additional 10 feet is really not necessary. 30 feet is plenty of room for parking. If the main reason for the longer garage setback is to establish a building-forward design, I argue that that's already impossible with a 30-feet setback. And if the main reason is to make sure the garage is not the most prominent feature of the building, then it seems an equal setback of garage and home would be adequate. So I attempted to create some drawings, and I'm disappointed that Councilmember Sterbaum is not here because he always asks for drawings, and I tried to accommodate. So in your packet that was distributed today, the first one is a drawing I made of adding on to the—a few things on to the RE district. So you'll see that if there's a 30-foot front building setback, in this example, it's actually —the house pictured is setback further than that, and then the garage is setback 10 feet further than that still. So if we move the garage up, that would be 10 feet less of driveway, so 10 feet less of permeable surface. Then the next page is an example in the R1 district. So here, I attempted to draw a couple of other houses for different examples. So the house that is actually in the UDO drawing gives you an example of a 15-foot setback, and then an additional five-foot setback for the garage. So in that example, we would have—if this amendment were passed, we would have five foot less of a permeable surface. Now, if the house is actually closer to the street than what the minimum front building setback is, which would be a non-conformingly used, which of course, we have some of these, then actually requiring 25 feet would lead to more permeable surface. So in that case, we're not really gaining any stormwater runoff benefits of having less pervious surface—I mean, more pervious surface. But then in the other example on the right, what if we had a case where the minimum lot setback is actually longer than what is required in the UDO? Here, if we had an additional 10 feet, really, that doesn't benefit anybody because this house is so far away from the street anyway. It doesn't really affect the, you know, the pedestrian view of—it's not like the garage is going to be close to the pedestrians anyway. And in this case, we would gain two feet of pervious surface, so grass or other vegetation, instead of having that extra-long driveway. So these are just some examples. The amendment also has similar requirements, so separating the front building setback from the setback for the garage for RM and RH. So I wanted to introduce this. I think it's kind of a trade-off, permeable surface or not seeing the garage as much. So I'm eager to hear what my colleagues might think about this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to staff.
Scott Robinson, Assistant Director for Planning and Transportation. Generally, I think that the intent of why we had the additional 10-foot setback is dealing with aesthetics. Does not really necessarily deal with impervious surface as Councilmember Piedmont Smith had talked about. Generally, we're looking at building-forward design, eyes on the street, and we didn't want the garage structures to be the primary focus of buildings. There's some things called snout houses. Generally, that's where the garage is the prominent feature of the house, and so it's more of an aesthetic treatment. Certainly understand the concerns regarding about the additional potential impact of impervious surface. That's the intent of why we had the 10 feet back from the primary building facade. There currently are structures in our community that do have that kind of prominent garage that faces the street. I would say that, you know, if council does amend this, we'll need to do a technical amendment to deal with Table 4-2 to reflect those changes. That wasn't included in here, so just wanted to point that out. That table just references the setbacks and heights, cross-references those. We'll need to correct that if this amendment passes. Generally, it's fine. It's kind of a policy question that's being raised as far as impervious surface. Again, our intent of why it has been written this way was to discourage that kind of prominent garage—garage doors facing the street, trying to encourage the primary entrance and the physical structure of the house to face the street. That's the intent of the way those setbacks have been drafted, but again, happy to answer any questions.
Just to clarify, do you have a preference, then?
Staff supports the way it's currently drafted. We do believe that that does create better consistency for neighborhoods and curb appeal. Yes, it's aesthetic. You know, I think in some of the, you know, the RE, larger, more kind of rural settings, maybe it might be more appropriate, but when you get into the more urban areas, again, I think the prominent feature of a streetscape, you know, eyes on the street, this may hinder that. Again, I think, as proposed, it's being suggested to be equal to the building. There may be some current situations where structure may actually be further back because these are minimums. They could put the garage forward of that building. But again, I think—actually, I think that was corrected with that language. So yeah, again, it's just a policy direction on that.
Thank you. So now we'll have questions. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, Councilmember Piedmont Smith mentioned non-conforming lots. Do we run into any issues with non-conforming lots with this amendment's changes?
So in any situation, there's legally non-conforming lots. So in the current situation, you could continue to use your property as a legally non-conforming situation. It would—there's triggers that would happen if you were to come in and make changes to your property, then there's certain things you would have to comply with those changes. So that's when—that would kick in.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
And this amendment not necessarily will change that moving forward?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Granger?
I'm not quite sure how to phrase this, but I'm—and I don't know to whom I'm addressing it, but is there—with—without the amendment, I mean, are we really losing a lot of permeable surface with the way that we have it written right now? I mean, is it—I'm just trying to figure out how to weigh the permeable surface with aesthetics. I personally don't like to look at garages either, but I just can't figure out what the benef—you know, if it's really—the benefit would outweigh the benefit of having permeable surface. I don't know.
I think, you know, the first two zoning districts, the RE and the R1, remember, we haven't mapped the R1 district, so there isn't any of that land currently. There's very little land currently zoned RE, so I don't think it would have any impact in those two districts realistically as far as how it could be impacted moving forward. Again, largely, the city's mostly built out, so we're looking at new areas where that change would happen on reducing impervious surface. So there might be a few instances where somebody may want to, I guess, add on to their garage or build a carport where they could have 10 feet less of perme—impervious surface. So that would be the potential benefit or change. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did, but it doesn't give me an answer. How's that?
I mean, I think, again, given the nature of the RE zone in the R1, I don't think there's a huge potential for a lot of change one way or the other. The two other districts, you know, again, those areas are currently largely built out. The differences are probably minimal, so there could be a little bit more potential in the future moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ruff?
This is for staff, probably. Well, it strikes me that, you know, in these areas that are largely built out, not exclusively is where we have the flooding problems. I mean, we know we have problems in areas farther away from the most highly densely developed areas, but I mean, I think incrementally, over time, as people have built additions, as people have gotten around to paving their formerly gravelled driveways—my driveway was gravel in Elm Heights when I first got the place—I think these things are contributing to increased flooding in these urban neighborhoods, these core neighborhoods that where we have isolated issues, like down on Manor Road, Brian Park. With increasing size of rainfall events, I mean, it seems to me like this—even—it's the idea that incrementally, we just keep doing little things, and then after a decade, we actually are experiencing a big problem that nobody really fully understands. Why does flooding seem worse now? Why is it worse at my house than it was, you know, when I got the place? So I'm wondering—I'm along with Councilmember Granger, trying to get a sense of whether this could make a difference, a cumulative effect difference, given time.
Well, that's a challenging question to answer. Again, I think one of the things I might want you to think about is how most people currently use their garages. I know many people often can't store their vehicles in there because they store other things in their garages, so they're often using their driveways to store their vehicles. I do know on some places, depending on how many vehicles are stored, they start stacking up and sometimes blocking sidewalks. So again, it's hard to anticipate, you know, the consequences if this would be beneficial or not in the impervious surface, but would you look at how it would—how garages and driveways are being used? That's a different question, I guess. So even though if this were to pass, there could be shorter driveways, that still doesn't raise the question on if the garage is actually being used to store vehicles, or if people are actually using their driveways to store additional vehicles, and then you start dealing with other issues with blocking sidewalks and what have you. So that's—you know, again, I think—I understand the desire and intent, and there is potential, but I think it's really hard to anticipate what that change is. I don't think it'd be a significant impact personally, but I think everything adds up, and that's something to think about.
Okay, thanks for your response. I had a quick follow-up for Councilmember Piedmont Smith, if I may.
Your minute overtime. Go ahead.
I just—Mrs—Councilmember Piedmont Smith, when you made your initial argument, it was fairly convincing. I thought it was fairly persuasive, but you said at the start that you didn't—I mean, I got the sense you were saying you didn't really have a strong feeling either way, but then you proceeded to make a pretty good case. So I'm kind of wondering where you're at on this.
Well, I think where I'm at is that it probably will not make a big difference either way. As Mr. Robinson said, this amendment deals with RE and R1 and a couple of multifamily districts. In multifamily districts, you usually don't have garages, so it's usually a moot point. And R1 is not on the map yet, and RE is very limited. I did have in mind that R1 will probably be used if and when we ever annex some land. That would be an appropriate use. But I guess—I think it's a good idea, but I don't think it'll make a big difference. So that's where I am.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? I just have one. It's kind of a reiteration, but the way I see it is that—I mean, nothing is more aesthetically punishing to me than going through and seeing snout houses. I mean, just as the prominent feature, garage, 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 garage. And this is—it's removing some building articulation, which makes things aesthetically interesting, right, to have that kind of articulation? So that's what you're hoping to achieve, is, you know, less of a—less prominence of garages, but more of building articulation?
Yeah, again, the idea of the setback would create a little bit of articulation, and again, put the facade of the house being the primary feature forward and the garage or carport behind that, so it's not the emphasis of the structure.
Yeah.
That's the original intent behind that 10-foot setback.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. If there are no other—Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Oh, yes.
Comment? The—first of all, the amendment would not allow the garage to be closer to the street than the house is, so we would not be allowing snout houses. Also, there's a reason why this amendment does not include R2, R3, or R4 districts, which I think are more likely to have pedestrians, because those districts, I think it is important to have a pedestrian-friendly street frontage with the articulation and the prominence of the porch or front door as opposed to a garage. So I just wanted to note those issues, that this is really just in the more rural sort of districts and in the couple of multifamily districts.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't mean to say literally snout houses, but it's that sort of aesthetic that—Council member Ruff?
Just a question for staff. Could you estimate or take some kind of guess at the percentage of development over the next decade or whatever that we might anticipate to see affected in any way by this, from development on individual lots that aren't associated with any larger development, all the way up to, you know, coordinated developments, parts of bigger projects? How much—
of districts and in the couple of multifamily districts.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't mean to say literally snout houses, but it's that sort of aesthetic that. Councilmember Ruff.
Just a question for staff. Could you estimate or take some kind of guess at the percentage of development over the next decade or whatever that we might anticipate to see affected in any way by this, from development on individual lots that aren't associated with any larger development, all the way up to, you know, coordinated developments, parts of bigger projects? How much of the potentially affected development, whether, like I say, it's an addition to or anything, all the way up to a project, would be already covered? Their impervious, the retention, the stormwater retention and detention regulations about rate of discharge from the project would probably be covered by, covered anyway by the stormwater regulations that aim to prevent any increased runoff anyway?
So there are impervious surface standards that could kick in, but again, it depends on the size of the structure and other improvements that occur on the site, so it's fairly site-specific, so it's hard to tell how this would impact. I can't speculate on the anticipated nature of type of development activity that's going to happen. I mean, there's a lot of factors that play into that with the economy. You know, we saw a downturn of the economy in 2008, how that really changed things. I would say, historically since I've been here, the student housing market's been very strong and continues to be strong, and we see the multifamily being the primary driver of our housing market. We're trying to change that with incentives and other things with this code. I would anticipate if, regardless of this passes or not, I think there's still a potential for people wanting to modify their existing houses with additions and what have you. So that has some potential impact. New areas, I think that's highly speculative to get into. That depends on the developer and what kind of product they're trying to market and sell.
Okay, thanks for your response.
Other questions? Seeing none, we will go to the public. If the public would like to comment on Amendment 60. Seeing no public comment, we're back to council for any other questions or comments. Let's go to comments, since I don't think there are any questions. Councilmember Ruff.
Yeah, as Councilmember Piedmont Smith pointed out, it doesn't allow the garage to be forward of the house, and I think that's the concern that really, I think, to me aesthetically creates some issues. So given that, and given that, I mean, I hear so many concerns and complaints of stormwater problems being worse than they were in previous years, and seeing stormwater events coming, even if this is just an incremental change, I could like it, I think I will support it, given that, once again, the garage can't go beyond the front setback.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I'm going to vote for my own amendment. I just want to mention that blocking sidewalks is really an enforcement issue, and it can happen no matter how long the driveway is, so I don't think that should be a reason to vote against this. And it's interesting what Mr. Robinson said about people using their garages to store things rather, other than their cars, you know, that's just a symptom of our kind of consumer culture, which is kind of a sad excuse, but, sorry, that was totally irrelevant, just my musings. But yeah, I think that, you know, this could make a little difference, the stormwater, even if you build with the, you know, the maximum impervious surface in mind in your subdivision, things change over time, and we've seen more and more rain events, and I think that every little bit would help. So I'm in favor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. One of the issues in my neighborhood is having houses pretty much designed with the garage forward and equal with the front setback, which is moved forward. And one of our issues is sometimes having a car parked and a car parked behind it creates a blockage on the sidewalk. And I'm not saying that's going to be a major thing, but in fact, it is. And I'm hearing that it's not going to be a real big difference with regard to stormwater runoff. And I know it's hard to predict, but this has good intent. I mean, I think I understand it, but this just feels like regulations that's not necessarily needed, to me, at this, at this point, and particularly for the two zones that we're talking about. So just wanted to say that. I don't think I'll be able to support this, but I understand the intent and the goodness thereof, but I think it'll create some other issues at this point, or not create enough benefit to change necessarily those regulations, so.
Thank you. Further comment? Boy, this is a tough one for me. I could really go either way. I think the aesthetics are important, but I think I'm with, leaning toward Councilmember Ruff, that any little bit in terms of impervious surface can probably help matters, so I'll support this. If there's no other comment, is there?
Call the question.
Second.
Okay, questions been called second on Amendment 60. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sandberg. Oh, no. I'm not used to. Sims?
Oh, she's going backwards me too. No. I'm sorry, I thought you started there.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Rolla?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Yes, Amendment 60 is adopted 5-2. Moving on to Amendment 61, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I move Amendment 61 to the UDO.
Second.
Okay, let me get there. All right, this amendment is a version of an amendment that the Environmental Commission requested with the aim of allowing increased densities. And it is an amendment affecting the as-yet-unmapped R4 district. And my goal is to allow three-story buildings in this district. Currently, the maximum height is 35, and I would like to increase it to 40 feet, so that three-story buildings can be built in that as-yet-unmapped district. I think we've spent a lot of time talking about greater densities and the reasons for having some greater density in the city of Bloomington. This, I want to emphasize, is not in R3, which is what currently is the equivalent to our core neighborhoods. This is in a more dense district, and we need more housing. We need housing that is close to where people need to go, both for eventually driving down the price and for environmental reasons, so that we can encourage transit and less single occupancy vehicle use. So this seeks to get to that greater density by allowing three stories. That's it.
Thank you. We'll go to staff now for comment.
Again, staff is fine with this amendment. I think originally the height was consistent with the R3 district, and that was why the lot standards and other standards for this are smaller, so I think there was some concern about height. You know, again, we do have a lot of discussion about height and context, we're trying to be sensitive to that. Again, staff is fine with this change. I do, again, want to point out that if this passes, we'll need to make a comparable reference change to Table 4-2 and a technical amendment following this. Be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. We'll go to questions now from council. Seeing no questions, we'll go to the public on Amendment 61. Seeing no public comment, back to council for final comment or recommendation.
I just wanted to point out that, I'm sorry, I should be recognized by the chair.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Pardon me. I think that, was it last week, we talked about the height standards for R1 and R2, and they are 40 feet. So I don't really understand why this one was less than those more suburban districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Recommendation?
Call the question.
Questions called second on Amendment 61. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Rolla?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Wait, did we have Sims yet? We did, okay. Sorry, thank you. So that is adopted, Amendment 61 is adopted 6 to 0. All right, I move Amendment 63.
Second.
This was brought to my attention and requested by Bloomington architect Barry Clapper, and was vetted by staff. It seeks to fill a need in certain housing types, particularly ranches, where heretofore we've had prohibitions against adding porches, and this allows for a small six-foot wide porch that would accommodate the residents, and it's oftentimes favored because, or requested because I think typically ranches have a front door that opens into the living room, and so they would like to have some kind of transition. And so now I'll go to staff to see if they have anything further to add, and I'd like to actually, perhaps I'll go to Ms. Clapper first, because she can describe this better than I did, from direct experience.
Good evening, Barry Clapper from Spring Point Architects, and thank you, Councilwoman Roland, for bringing this forward. The current code has been frustrating for a number of years because of this prohibition on being able to do any front yard additions of any size or type in established neighborhoods. The way setbacks were defined, if you had neighbors to either side, you were limited, you really couldn't go any more forward. And it's really not very difficult, it's not very easy to get a variance of this nature because you have to prove a, have to show a practical difficulty that's related to a peculiar aspect of your actual lot, and that's not always so easy to do. So I had learned that in drafting this new version of the UDO, part of that has gone away, and the way that setbacks are now defined has to do with a change in the language. And before, if you were in an existing neighborhood, the greatest distance was what set the setback. And now that language has been flipped to allow either the 15-foot or the smaller difference be that setback line. So it gives you some more flexibility, so I was really happy to see that. I still think that there's a place for this small change, to allow people flexibility, and the way that I would see it is there are lots of places where people don't realize, they think they have a huge front, they have a huge front yard, and they don't realize where the property line is. Often, the property line is not aligned with the back of the sidewalk or the front of the street. And actually, we've had a number of clients who come in and they want to do a very modest front yard addition, and they simply don't have that much space to work with. And so when you're thinking of an addition of this nature, it's a, you know, a reasonable investment in your property, and sometimes having the ability to make things an extra foot or two is really something that becomes a necessity, and it's not worth doing if you can't have at least, you know, a decent room to walk in on. So sort of in terms of how this has evolved, I still think that there is a place for this modest amendment that would align it with other types of exceptions that are allowed, that are authorized. That's what I'd say.
Thank you, Ms. Clapper.
Thank you.
We may call on you if there are questions, because I probably won't be able to answer them articulately. So we'll go to staff. Would you like to comment on the amendment?
I guess staff is supportive of this. There are some situations, particularly in the R2 district, as Ms. Clapper said, that have been challenging to deal with some modest additions on houses. On the front of their houses typically front entryways, so this amendment would address those, still address our concerns for making sure there's appropriate setbacks. I think, looking back at, you know, maybe the nature of why the standard was set, some of the districts have a build-to line, and there's a 15-foot. Generally, when you talk to our utility providers, oftentimes they want to make sure there's enough, there isn't any permanent structure in that clear zone when they're doing utility work and they get heavy equipment in there. Yes, they are on your property, you'd need permission for that, but when you start having permanent structures, that becomes significantly more challenging to deal with. So that's kind of the nature where that kind of got built in. But I think with the changes in the current UDO, as Ms. Clapper detailed on how we define setbacks, and with this change here, I think, again, staff is supportive of that and what it achieves, so be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, maybe it's appropriate to offer an amendment, because Councilmember Piedmont Smith would like to amend this amendment.
Yes, thank you. I would like to offer a friendly amendment to add the RE and the R1 zoning districts in this change, because they may also have this type of ranch-style house with no front entry, where people might also want to make this kind of addition.
Second.
Okay, so this is the amendment to the amendment, and I welcome it, I'm glad that Councilmember Piedmont Smith suggested it. I think we had staff win, and you, perhaps you could just, you're agreeable.
Yes, staff is fine with those districts. Again, I think when, particularly the R3, when you have that build-to line, that would create some challenges. There is some language in there that indicates you obviously can't encroach on, you know, private property, but again, we're supportive of these additional districts.
Okay. So we'll go to questions for the amendment on the amendment. Is there any? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for the amendment on the amendment. Okay, it's agreeable to everyone, I think. We're back to council for maybe a recommendation.
Call the question on the amendment to the amendment.
Second.
Okay. Questions been called second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the amendment to Amendment 63.
Councilmember Granger?
Yes.
Rolla?
Yes.
Bowlin?
No.
Sims?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. So the amendment to Amendment 63 is adopted 6-0. So back to the amendment as amended, and we're at questions. A few questions for Ms. Clapper or staff? Okay, seeing no questions. Is there any public comment on Amendment 63 as amended? Seeing none, we're back to council.
Second.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Ms. Clapper, for catching this, because I think this is really a very, very important, very important thing, and I'm sure it gives people a little freedom and is going to be, do a lot of good, so thank you. Questions been called second on Amendment 63 as amended. Will the clerk please call the roll? Yes.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment 63 as amended is adopted 6-0. I'd like to move Amendment 64 to the UDO.
Second.
This, I'm sponsoring on behalf of the Sustainability Commission, and it clarifies timeline, and it essentially provides transparency. timeline, and it essentially provides transparency for payment in lieu concerning affordable housing. And staff probably can describe it a bit better, so I'll turn it over to staff.
Thanks, Councilmember Marallo. Yes, this has kind of been a consistent theme throughout the process, both at the Plan Commission and council. There was some general concerns about how the city is going to calculate the payment in lieu fees. Again, the way we've structured the incentives is the payment in lieu is the last option, but it's still an option we'd like to keep on the table. Our position has been from the beginning that we want to get the rules right before we start getting into the discussion about how we calculate the fees. So Plan Commission did amend this section of the code to help provide some additional clarity to what factors could be used, and that's where you see parts B, I through, or I through six, or one through six in the bottom. What's being proposed is to tie this to when the effective date of the UDO will be, which is something council will need to determine. Staff has been recommending that that be three to six months after the adoption date, or tie it to when we adopt the conversion map. Secondly, there's, the current UDO has a lot of administrative material in that, a lot of that is leaving this draft, and staff is producing an administrative manual, and that's where this would live. City council currently reviews and approves the Housing Development Fund, and so there's reporting already in place for how that money is going to be used, but again, we could detail that, so that's the best place for how this document would live in the future. It's never been an appropriate place to legislate how this would be reported and calculated, and again, we support this amendment and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions? On Amendment 64? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll go to public. No public comments. We'll go to council for any second chance of questions or comment. Oh, Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson? I'm sorry. That's okay. Could you more clearly, what we're talking about is calculating an amount, and is there a calculation rate based on these six that we, I mean, do they all carry individual weight or multiple weight, or, and what's the figure? How is that determined, I guess?
So, so that's the question, is how is that formula established? As you know, currently, right now, everything's a negotiated process, and we're trying to get away from a negotiated process. The incentives will be voluntary, and again, the way this, the affordable housing incentives are structured, that onsite is the first priority, near-site or close-by is second, and the third option would be a payment in lieu of providing those onsite, affordable housing units. There's two tiers to affordability, so we have, you know, below 120, or I guess above 180% of AMI, annual median income. So when you start getting down to that deeper tier, that's the tier-two incentive, takes a little bit more subsidy. So there's a little bit of consideration in how you would calculate those, depending on tier-one and tier-two, so those are some of the things that are factored into the annual rates of income. HUD comes out with their reports annually, there's other factors that go into that. If utilities and other things are considered, so those things need to be somewhat fluid from year to year, we wouldn't want to be specifically codified that, you know, the payment in lieu price is X dollars per square foot or what have you. That sort of thing would be put into the administrative manual, that people could clearly see how it's calculated and understand what those formulas are.
Okay, so when a proposal is brought to city council, will it be kind of itemized, and say, this was the value of each of those items, and then this is the amount?
Yes.
Is that the way it'll come to us?
That's our intent, that it would be very easy for people to understand how those rates are calculated.
Okay, thank you.
My councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, so this amendment does not specify which body will adopt the administrative procedures. Mr. Robinson, is it your understanding that this will be done by staff, or by Plan Commission, or by who?
Well, some of the administrative procedures are application forms and what have you. One of the things that the city is considering was what's the appropriate board to review and adopt those procedures. Plan Commission's probably not the best fit when you're looking at some of the things that we're considering, so there has been discussion about what's the appropriate body that would at least review and advise staff on doing that, and that's something that we would specify here. But we've had our legal team look at what the duties and responsibilities are of various boards and commissions, define which is the most appropriate. Generally speaking, the administrative manual, again, is reflecting the administrative functions of planning, so a lot of that stuff is permits and applications and those things that shouldn't live in the UDO. We would specify what that process is, and if there's an adoption, it would say, you know, this board or that group would make recommendations and adopt those rules, and that's what would be specified in the administrative manual. And again, we would, it would show where that process and how it's done.
So is it, will it be a public body that adopts these procedures for calculating, collecting, accounting for, and spending payments in lieu?
I think, adopting the actual procedures or adopting the administrative manual? Administrative manual is not legislative or adopted document, it's just a manual describing what the steps are in process to administer the UDO. So it would specify which board or commission is responsible for reviewing and making those recommendations, or adopting that calculation. We're still determining which is the appropriate city board to do that function, and that would be specified in the administrative manual. For example, if it were the Plan Commission, it would say, the Plan Commission has the ability to review and adopt the calculations, and we would specify what those are, and then we would report what that is in the administrative manual. But again, we don't believe that the Plan Commission is the appropriate body to review and adopt the payment in lieu calculations.
Okay, I guess, let me rephrase that. So is, would there be, so, okay, so you're going to come up with the administrative manual, you know, your staff and legal and economic sustainable development will talk and come up with a way to do this. Is, is that then going to be approved either in general or on a case-by-case basis by a public body?
Yes, again, I think it would be. I mean, our intent is, we don't want it to be this vague thing that changes daily or weekly, but at the same time, we don't want to make it so rigid that we have to be go legislatively deal with changing the calculations. So we're looking for the appropriate public body to review, approve, adopt, or whatever you want to call it. There is a vetting happening, so people understand how those rates and methods are calculated, and then we can administer those rates and methods, per se. Our concern is that we want it to be able to reflect when those annual reports come out from HUD or other places, which don't always align with end of the year or what have you, or if the economy drastically changes or other information comes, we want to be fairly quick and responsive to be able to adjust those rates as needed. But yes, our intent is to spell it out and have opportunity for public to review and input in vetting.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Sandberg?
One of the recommendations from the comprehensive plan is the formation of a housing commission, and that's also a recommendation from the Affordable Living Commission report. Is that something that's in the works, that would be a body that would review some of this, or are we strictly speaking, a department, like, you know, a hand department, Plan Commission?
As part of the UDO, I'm not aware of that conversation. I do know that-
I mean, I didn't mean the UDO, I meant the comp plan.
The comprehensive plan does reference the possibility of creating other reviews and commissions, and obviously, that is something that the administration is evaluating and considering. The city currently has lots of boards and commissions, and we want to make sure we're using them appropriately, or trying to leverage their value in how we can. But yeah, absolutely, that could be something that can be considered.
I think, you know, in respect to answering the public's concern about the transparency of all this, and how these calculations are come to, I think having a housing commission that is citizen-staffed, similar to our environmental commission that weighs in quite heavily with respect to projects that come before the Plan Commission. Again, I'm just questioning what the administration's plan is for including a little bit more of that public process, that would take away some of the onus on, this is not a transparent process, it's, it's all too negotiated behind closed doors. I'm just kind of asking, what, if any, discussion has there been about how else we can expand the bodies that review this?
Again, the intent is, yes, it will be vetted publicly, and there'll be an opportunity to do that, we're just trying to find the appropriate board and commission. You know, as you know, if we were to create a new board and commission, that would add additional time and consideration. You know, we recently, council recently created the Parking Commission, which took a few years to undergo. You know, our focus right now is looking at the resources we have with the existing boards and commissions, before we start looking at creating a new one, but that's, that's our preference, is looking at what we have right now, and in the future, if there's the desire to create a new board and commission, then that's something that we can obviously make that change.
Thank you.
Further questions? On Amendment 64? Someone like to call a question? Yes, you were in comments. Councilmember Granger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I am going to be passing on this, because I, at the core of it, I do not like payment in lieu, and I don't like the concept. I'd rather see our housing mixed and diverse, rather than, that's what I would rather see. So I will be passing on this amendment. Thank you.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I want to thank Councilmember Marallo for bringing this forward. I'm also not a big fan of payment in lieu, since I sponsored the amendment to eliminate that option for PUDs, but we do have it as an option, and given that we do, I think we need to do everything we can to make the process public, to make the guidelines very clear, so that there can be no doubt that we are applying the guidelines fairly, and not treating any developer or proposal differently when it comes to payment in lieu. And I'm very pleased that as soon as we pass this UDO, we can get rid of this perception that there has been a pay-to-play game going on the last few years. I think it's a false perception, but I think that with this new UDO, we will have much clearer rules, and Italy, proposals for development will either meet our rules, or they will not meet our rules, and there will no longer be this negotiation every time a PUD comes forward, or a new development plan comes forward. So I think that's a very positive thing, and this amendment is a small part of that. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Councilmember Sandberg?
Sims or Sandberg?
Sandberg.
Oh, thank you. I am in favor of any mechanism possible in our toolkit to be able to provide the funding for incentives, innovations with respect to housing, particularly affordable housing, which does require subsidy, and there's no two ways about it, that's the way we get it. So I'm not adverse to the payment in lieu process, per se. I am very concerned, however, about the transparency and the public perception, and I think the more we can codify and put in writing the formulas, and have additional citizen eyes on the process, I think that will go a long way toward alleviating many of the concerns that certainly have developed over this. But in terms of being able to support our opportunities to get the funding that we need, I'm absolutely in favor of it, I'm not going to pass or vote against it, although I still do have concerns about how it's going to be written and made clear as to how these negotiations are approached, and what kind of mechanisms are discussed with the various developers who come forward and choose this voluntarily as their option. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Sandberg, this is just another tool in our toolbox, and I think it's important, and I do support the payment in lieu, mainly because of the parameters that have been set with some of the state zoning laws. So it's just another tool for us to, to help with the housing situation. I am looking forward to finding out more about the calculation rates and how all that works out. I know, I know we don't have an answer now, but for an example, if we were asking a developer to provide 15% affordable housing on that project, and then that's kind of where I take it, the negotiation starts. So what is that 15% of not providing, what is that worth from a calculation rate? And then, what will we do with the money that we got there, and how many of these things will add up to the total that we could use to affordable housing? So I'm, I guess I'm just talking, I know we don't have an answer for that tonight, but I think moving forward, that will increase transparency and get us further away from the perception of backdoor deals and that sort of stuff. So that's one of the things I'll be looking for, and so we can compare projects and that sort of thing, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims, any other comment? Seeing none.
Call a question?
Second.
Questions been called and seconded on Amendment 64. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Pass.
Marallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment 64 is adopted five-zero-one. Moving on to Amendment nine-R, it's been revised and returned to us, and it is sponsored by Councilmember Volin. Would someone like to introduce it? This is on behalf of staff.
I move Amendment nine-R to the UDO.
Second.
I will not present it, though, and ask the staff to present.
All right, we'll turn it over to staff. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, based on previous discussions from council, as you recall, this amendment was previously discussed as a staff-supported amendment in regards to cooperative housing. During the deliberations, the one housing provider, Bloomington Cooperative Living, did provide some testimony, and they had some concerns. Based on our observation of council's interest, there was a desire to have staff take another look at it, to make cooperative housing more permissive in the community, to make it easier for these uses. One of the things that staff did when we reevaluated the original proposal was looking at the barriers of where some of the properties that Bloomington Cooperative Living is looking at, and how those arrangements are made. We believe that what we have proposed does address those concerns, so that cooperative living would be, would meet, be more permissive throughout the community, would be easier for those entities to incorporate cooperative living arrangements. So again, what's being proposed is pretty much the same as the original amendment, there would be use-specific standards that are listed before you about what cooperative housing is. That would live outside of T-.
That would live outside of Table 3-1, if you recall. It just provides a blanket coverage of what cooperative housing is and where they're allowed, and how it would be applied in the use-specific table. They gave an example. There's a defined word about adding a definition of cooperative housing. We kept the definition largely the same, but added a requirement that they are registered with the Indiana State Secretary of State. Again, that's just to validate that they are indeed a corporation, to give us a little bit more enforcement and vetting when we're checking that. And then finally, the last thing that we recommend changing is the definition of family. One of the barriers that was discussed was some of these structures are, have many bedrooms, and so even though we made the cooperative living permitted in any zoning district that had residential use as a permitted use or conditional, and one of the barriers was the number of bedrooms and possibly the number of cooking units and the definition, and how many people could live there. We believe by changing the definition of family to include a new group who are shareholders within the same cooperative living corporation that owns a facility that meets the definition of cooperative housing, that no more than two adults per bedroom would occupy that structure. So we believe with this change, that would address the concerns that were previously discussed, and again, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions. But that, I think, would satisfy the concerns that we heard and the desire of council to make cooperative living permissive or allowed. If you recall, we recommended getting rid of the use variance process, which was recently adopted. That's been the way we've been dealing with these in the past. So if no action is taken on this, then there really isn't a viable option, that I understand, for allowing cooperative housing moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, so the change in the definition adds that it must be a cooperative corporation registered with the Indiana Secretary of State. So does... Is Bloomington Cooperative Living currently a registered cooperative corporation?
Michael Rooker, City Attorney for the city. Yes, they are registered with the Indiana Secretary of State currently.
Okay.
And that is, just to clarify, that's what we would call a pro forma requirement, or just sort of a recitation of a requirement that was already implied in the prior definition, but we wanted to make it explicit so that it's clear what we meant for members of the public who might look at this definition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions on Amendment 9R? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. You may ask a rhetorical question, and we will try to answer it, not directly, but when we come back to comment, or you may comment, and please state your name.
My name is Brady Heberlin, and I'm staff at Bloomington Cooperative Living, Inc. I do have one question, which I want to give a little bit of background for, which is that the UDO draft, as it stands, includes us in core neighborhoods and anywhere, again, where the cooperative house generally fits the structural layouts of the area. And so on one hand, that's like, we're very excited about that, because it means that we will be able to offer cooperative housing in walkable and bikeable areas, which is absolutely huge for us to continue to be able to do that. I do want to bring up one technical complication or question, and which is that per the existing UDO documentation language, the single-family homes are recognized by the presence of a single kitchen. And we've found over time that approximately one kitchen for every 10 people creates a really cohesive, collaborative space for people to live together and work together. And again, these are often, you know, non-students, you know, and families moving forward. And so we just want to be clear, or we just want to know that moving forward with our next project in the near west side neighborhood and beyond that, that the definition of as a family, which we generally think is very appropriate, will still allow us to have multiple kitchens in the same structure.
Thank you for your comment and question. Further public comment? Seeing none, okay. Back to council for follow-up questions. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Could staff please respond to the member of the public, her question about having more than one kitchen?
Yeah, we're looking at our notes. One moment, please. I do believe we did factor that into the original discussion, the original proposal, in how it's being entitled to a housing unit on the property. So again, we're trying to allow that flexibility as a... How the structure of the cooperative housing is being used, but we're double-checking real quick.
Yeah, we looked at it, and our development services team looked at it as well, and they agree that the definition as written, it doesn't include the carve-out that is subsection six, doesn't use the language "single housekeeping unit." Therefore, it wouldn't create the concern that BCL is raising right now. So that's our interpretation.
So you would allow more than one kitchen?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I was a little concerned, because I know that when we talked about ADUs, something that defines an ADU is a separate kitchen, and I don't want to make them go through the process to get an ADU approved.
We don't have anybody here from the development review team, but our understanding, based on the conversations we had with them, is that that is... They will not make them go through that process.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions? Second round, seeing none. Comment on Amendment 9 as revised? Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I appreciate this going back for further thought. I'm particularly excited about this amendment. I do think that it fits a need within our community, and want to thank staff for the work that they did on this.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I want to echo Councilmember Granger's thanks, appreciation, and just keep in mind that cooperative housing is affordable housing, and it's often one of the only affordable housing options that is actually available in Bloomington. So anything we can do to facilitate that, I think, is a great idea, especially in our neighborhoods that are close to services. I think that these will... I would love to see more of these kind of homes for all age groups, both for affordability and for being close enough to not have to rely on cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Councilmember Sims.
Appropriate to echo it three times, if my colleagues, I would do that as well. But I really want to thank the staff, because many of these concerns were raised at our last discussion of this, along the lines of definition and making sure it fits within the zoning, and lastly, so that we had a clearer understanding of what actually cooperative meant with regard to ownership, with regard to, like we brought up, kitchen space with these sorts of things. So this is much better than what we talked about before, and I appreciate all the hard work, like my colleagues, and thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none.
Call a question?
Second.
Question's been called and seconded on Amendment 9 as revised. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment 9 as revised is adopted 6-2-0. Okay, that concludes amendments on our regular agenda for this evening. We will now go to council schedule, and I assume this means that we have nothing to hear on Thursday. Is that correct?
Yes, there are a couple of decisions you could make by motion tonight. First of all, cancel the scheduled meeting for Thursday, December 12. You then have two more occasions, evenings, for the consideration of the UDO, next Tuesday, that's the 17th, and next Wednesday, the 18th, both at 6:00. The 18th is a Wednesday, the 18th is when you usually conduct business and do have some business that night. So along with canceling, maybe you want to... You can hear me out or have a motion now to cancel the meeting on the Thursday, so...
Would someone like to offer?
Move to cancel the meeting on Thursday.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of canceling our UDO meeting for Thursday, December 12, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is canceled. Mr. Sherman?
Thank you. The second and third items is, when do you want to meet next? To wrap up the UDO, that could be next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. or next Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. The third matter is final business. Are there any other amendments that you want to bring back or introduce at this time? And if so, I'd like to hear you talk about that and then authorize staff to process amendments for release this Friday. So those are the two outstanding matters. So I don't know if you want to have a sense of how many amendments there are before you talk about when you want to meet next, or the other way around.
I think we'll anticipate some third round amendments, I believe. Is that justified? Technical amendments, but yet some involving perhaps flat roofs? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, you were interested in potentially that subject? So I think that we will need another meeting. The question is, Tuesday or Wednesday? And when would they need to be submitted, then, depending upon...
To get them out this Friday. So I think we also have a Volin amendment on parking.
I'll speak for Councilmember Volin. I think he's intending to reintroduce one amendment regarding parking maximums that we've been working on, and staff mentioned at this, tonight's meeting, that there are at least two technical amendments that we'll need to have to adjust other sections as a result of tonight's amendments, so...
Yeah. Mr. Lucas, also, is there... Was there an amendment potentially from Councilmember Sturbaum to revisit fences?
My last indication was he was not intending to introduce or reintroduce amendments.
Okay. Technical amendments, does staff have a comment?
Mr. Lucas already mentioned just the Table 4-2. I mean, we'll have another opportunity to do some cleanup. We sometimes look for consistency of words, but that... We can deal with that later. That's the only one that jumps out at me right at this time.
I see, okay. Further comments from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
May I ask our attorney a question? Could you remind us what else is on the agenda for next Wednesday?
Certainly. You'll have the living wage ordinance, and it's the last meeting for four of the council members, and there's usually some sort of acknowledgement that could take some time. And that's it.
Sounds like we would have time for some amendments.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith suggests that we have our UDO meeting that evening on Wednesday, since we have a fairly light schedule.
On Wednesday, the 18th?
Yes.
So if I can phrase that in terms of a motion that matches our schedule, that we amend the schedule to, and this incorporates your motion you made earlier, to strike the meetings on December 12th and 17th, and meet at 6:00 p.m. That's 6:00 p.m., not 6:30, on December, Wednesday, December 18th.
Would someone like to...
To conclude business on the UDO and take care of other council business.
Question, is it a separate meeting, or it's all just a regular meeting? Or how do we organize that?
Since we're starting at 6:00 p.m. with the UDO, is your preference to work through the UDO first and then perhaps hold a regular session after that? I haven't thought through that. It's a good... We could do that if you want.
It was Councilmember Piedmont Smith's proposal, so I'm going to throw it to her. Do you have a preference?
I guess I prefer to do the UDO first.
Okay.
Mr. Sherman, I had 6:30 on my calendar for the 18th. Why are we meeting at 6:00?
I'm looking at the schedule we adopted in October, and it has 6:00 p.m., so that's where I'm getting it from. If you had gone with the annual schedule, it would have been 6:30.
I see.
Would you like to change that to 6:30?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'm afraid. What if we go late? I don't know. Maybe, I don't know.
Six.
So I guess we have a motion that's been framed by Council Attorney Sherman. Would someone like to...
Yes, to strike the meetings on Thursday, December 12th, Tuesday, December 17th, and meet on Wednesday, December 18th, at 6:00 p.m. to conclude business, at a special session, to conclude deliberations on the Unified Development Ordinance.
So moved.
And to be followed by a regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, and all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. An ending is in sight. Anything else, Mr. Sherman, for our schedule?
No, thank you.
All right. Would someone like to move that we recess?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are recessed.